And we're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we already had a facilitated workshop and we're now, I'm going to go on to public commentary. I have about sixteen cards here. As those of you who have spoken before know that we have allotted about up to three minutes if anybody does want to speak. Mrs. Levin is going to be our timer unless she'd like somebody else to do it tonight, okay? She will let you know if you get close to the three minutes. If you do get close to the three minutes, then if you could just finish up your thought, we would really appreciate it. You'll come to the podium when you speak. And a lot of opinion on this, but I'm just going to ask us, please, let's be respectful, let's have a good meeting. We'll listen to everything that everybody has to say. The board will not respond here. It's our time to listen to you. If somebody does need to get back with you, we'll try to do so in a timely manner. It really just depends how many we have to respond to and how long it takes us to do that. But let's be the district, the board, the meeting that we know we can be, and let's do it together. With that being said, Lisa Massett, if you could come forward.
It should be, okay. It's my first time. Great. Good evening. My name is Lisa Massett and my daughter Emily is a junior at Northern. I'm here tonight to address the district's advanced math path and the advice or lack thereof that she has received from our counseling department. Emily has been ahead of math since the second grade. Because of this, she started on the GeoCalc path as an eighth grader, a year earlier than most on that path. At the end of Emily's freshman year, she was advised to take a track that put her in AP Calc her junior year, this year, not her senior year. However, because of scheduling conflicts between math and foreign language, Emily is not taking AP Calc at Northern this year. She's taking it virtually. Why? Because of the options that were provided to her, she chose what seemed like the best of the worst. Her other options included dropping French altogether, taking French IV in a French III classroom, not taking AP Calc at all, or dual enrollment. It is clear that none of these options are ideal and in fact are all unacceptable. As for the dual enrollment option, because we did not find out about the conflict until less than a week ago, college and virtual classrooms are at or very close to capacity. Emily also is a two-sport athlete, leaving no time to add a college schedule to her high school schedule. We felt very rushed to make a decision about something we shouldn't have had to even consider. This is inefficient at best and at worst leaves students such as my daughter having to potentially drop advanced courses in math, foreign language, or otherwise, resulting in a negative impact on their high school transcripts. I have been placated and told over the years that students who demonstrate a need for academic rigor will have those needs met. However, our experience proves otherwise. Asking a student to choose between advanced math and advanced foreign language is not meeting her academic needs. The process needs to be addressed. It should be determined prior to August what the conflicts are so that they can be fixed in a timely manner. Scheduled templates should be in place prior to students submitting course requests. Perhaps this can prevent conflicts like the one Emily has experienced for the past two years. To that end, because our high school cannot offer enough sections of AP and other advanced courses, asking students to take a class virtually or perhaps not at all, it's apparent that our school district is unable to support the needs of those who are striving to achieve at the highest level. I request that this be addressed even if it might not be in time to help my daughter. Thank you.
Heather Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Martinez. I identify by the pronouns she, her, and hers, and I respect the right of everyone to choose their own. I'm a parent of two seniors this year and a recent graduate who just went off to Grand Valley yesterday. I'm also a former graduate of Wald Lake Western, so I am highly invested in this district. I want to also congratulate Julianne Muir, who I see sitting here tonight. I'm happy that her role has been elevated and I look forward to the many wonderful things that will happen in our special education department moving forward. I also want to send all my prayers and best wishes to our students and staff as they embark on a new school year. This is a very stressful time for everyone and I hope that they will all be safe and feel very supported by all of you as well as our community members. As a former educator, I know all the work that's been done over the summer preparing for our students and I hope that everyone here can be very supportive of our teachers, our staff, our board, our superintendent moving forward into this school year. This is not the time to cut people down, to use words against our teachers and our staff that are trying tirelessly to prepare our students for the future. So I just want to say thank you to all of you and I look forward to this school year.
Liz Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Liz Thompson. I'm a resident of White Lake Township for the past twenty-plus years. Engineered by education, with over thirty years corporate experience, currently a small business owner, a widow and a mother of two young adults. I'm also Christian, a patriot, and a proud citizen of our great country and this overall community. Last month's board meeting was the first I'd ever attended in any district. I was troubled by what I observed, but I needed to do some research before jumping to any conclusions because I didn't have all my facts. So I went home and did that research and I ended up even more troubled. The disinformation at the July board meeting, especially that shared by a long-term board member, was quite disheartening. No one wants to see our children bullied or harmed in any way. I watched Mrs. Teich's speech at the Tea Party meeting. She did not express anything that could be construed as a danger to the children of the district. I am deeply disappointed in board members and anyone who flat-out lies to portray a narrative that is just not grounded in facts. Unfortunately, we live in a time where there is a concerted effort to divide us and to make us enemies. Truth is distorted on a daily basis to serve the purpose of keeping us dumbed down and repeating false narratives. Free speech is frowned upon as we can no longer freely exercise our discerning minds and question the narrative. Let's reject this and get back to building up our communities. Let's sit down and have civil conversations over what's truly going on because I'm confident that we could come to some common ground. On this recent push to put explicit sexual literature in our schools that pushes ideas of more than two genders and so much more, that's not providing a safe space for our children. What it's really doing is asking young adults, young minds not equipped to fully understand, to carry a load that they are just not prepared for. Some knowledge is just too heavy for our children. These topics are confusing and overwhelming to young minds not equipped to understand them. We should not be forcing children to see and feel the world through the lens of adults. Innocence is worth protecting and fighting for. While it's important to educate children about safety, healthy relationships, consent, et cetera, anything more than this should be left to the parents who are best equipped to tailor these discussions to their children's individual needs and values. Let's not divert valuable time and resources from basic academic subjects. Our schools already face challenges in providing solid education on core subject matters. Yeah, I grew up and the only girl in my family, I had four brothers who I absolutely adored. I spent my days playing cops and robbers, cowboys, Indians, et cetera. Only occasionally did I enter my fantasy world, my Barbie dolls. Had an adult come to me and said, "You know what? You can be like your brothers if you want to make a change." At such a tender young age, I can only imagine if I had jumped on that, what a tragedy that would have been. My young mind was not equipped to understand what this meant nor mature enough to make such a decision. So that said, we should certainly be supporting children who question their identities by offering love and support, acceptance, guidance, and get them safely through their formative years. Let's be the adults in the room, come together and line on ways to carry that load for our children until they are old enough to understand. Focus school education on the core subjects. Let's protect the innocence of our children. They'll be adults soon enough and can make those informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared, is it Rochon? Rochon, R-O-C-H-O-N? Did I get close? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to share kind of some feelings here. So the focus and attention of everyone here tonight needs to be on how we make our district better. Not the us-versus-them mentality currently displayed by the board most recently at the last board meeting. When the meeting had to be paused, the board was requested to leave the floor until order was restored. Select board members stayed on the floor while the rest left the floor. Eventually, everyone did leave, but then select members came back out and sat at the table. They then had to be instructed to leave the floor again. I don't say this to point fingers, but to instead display the clear divide, this is not helping our district in any way. This has been very evident at the last several meetings during the public comment portion. A school board is supposed to be void of political sides. This does not mean everyone should just agree on every motion and each other without asking questions and just going along with the flow, but instead means there should be a board of individuals working together with the focus being on the school district, students, and staff, not the current us-versus-them mentality recently put on the table. I hope tonight's facilitated workshop creates a more united board. It is time the board works together to do what you were elected to do. That is to focus on making our district the best in the state and not an individual or individuals' agenda. The focus is every child, every day, not yours or my child on select days. Thank you.
Katie Bardos. Katie Bardos.
Hello, my name is Katie Bardos. I have a freshman in college at FIU in Miami. I have a junior at Wald Lake Northern. After the three-ring circus that I witnessed at the last meeting and to find out that the kids are afraid to speak and that our number-one priority are those kids and also the teachers, we need to make them all feel safe and give them the best resources to be successful at a united front. Not us versus them. We need to leave politics at the door and not on the board or in the audience. These shenanigans that are going on and are derailing us from what is important to make our district the best it can be, we need to refocus and ensure all of our resources and energy are on our kids, teachers, and staff. Everyone, every day. Thank you. And side note, Dr. Burnia, I love the panel of students during the dis-- oh my gosh, that give me chills. Thank you.
Kristy Rust.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to start by saying that we had a great Geiser get-going over at Banks this past Monday. Hopefully, Geiser will be ready to open on Monday with all the changes, whatever you guys were doing over the summer. I have a current seventh grader, so I'm sure he'll be fine. He'll be fine. But for those of you that have sixth graders and especially new parents of a new middle schooler that's in sixth grade going to the building they haven't seen, rest assured, the staff at Geiser is incredible and they will help your sixth grader make it through the day, the week, whatever they need to be successful, to have a great start to the year. They are amazing. I also wanted to just touch quickly on the August 3rd board meeting and I hope that some of the board members have thought long and hard about what was said at that meeting and hopefully will decide to not continue with their commentary but simply apologize and move on and move forward and think about the great things that are happening in Wald Lake as we begin a new school year rather than air personal comments that do not do anything but divide this community, this district, this board. So I do hope that the commentary goes along with kind of what Ms. Casa Grande said about being respectful and let's celebrate Wald Lake. Thank you.
Teresa Renan.
Good evening, elected officials. It's good to be here again. I missed last month. I'm here representing myself as a graduate of Central. My husband was a graduate of Central and my daughter was a very good graduate of Central. So I missed last month. I did listen to the recording. It was interesting. I would recommend that the next training session might include at some point in the future, Robert's Rules of Order. I think that would be very helpful. I think there's a lot of misinformation in the audience about the entire experience. I actually am celebrating the diversity that our board has as it represents the entire community. My comments tonight are my own and I have two. As we enter this new season, I think it would be very helpful if the board would come out with our bathroom policy and our sports policy and where those policies come from. We are going to be very confused as a community if things continue to happen and it gets rumored about and we don't understand why, where it came from, and what the corrective process action should be. So if we have a bathroom policy that allows biological boys to enter the girls' bathroom, we need to understand that. It just needs to be put out there in policy. And we need to understand, does that come from the state or is that a Wald Lake district thing? So that's number one. And then secondly, what's our sports policy? There's a lot in the news. We need to understand where our community stands on whether or not we will have biological boys competing on the girls' teams. Thank you.
Lisa West.
Good evening. First, I just want to say I really appreciate watching your workshop. It was nice to see the communication between all of you. And I just want to encourage you guys to continue to talk because I feel like you're making grounds by communicating. You have seven different perspectives up there. I know just between my husband and I, we see things differently. And that's okay, but we just need to make sure that we try to communicate effectively so there's a common goal, which is our district, not kids. What I really came here though was about Wald Lake Northern's marching band and under the amazing, talented director of Barry Hollibur. She's amazing. I had the opportunity to serve one hundred ninety-four students that are in her marching band as a band rep, which means as one of three band reps, we get to help put the whole, all the band camps and everything together. But these students are so talented. They work really hard. As school lets out in June, you have section leaders who are contacting their students in their section. Some have as many as thirty kids in the section for meet-and-greets to get together, practice before rehearsals start in July. So there's a lot of work they put in. As you consider these students, I want you to envision the diversity they have there. We have students who have three years of marching band experience and are entering their fourth year. To students who have never marched before, just coming out of middle school band, and in the case of these incoming freshmen, learn to play their instruments virtually in sixth grade. So this is a huge feat, I think, for these kids. At the end of July, the whole band came together for two weeks of camp, first at home camp, and they learned to march and do the entire preview show, which I think is just phenomenal. And then the following week, they were bused to Camp Oesa in Holly for six days and they learned the entire halftime show. Within these camps, we had kids who knew nobody coming in and as they left, they had friends they never expected. I saw seniors that took amazing leadership roles. And some of these kids who are quiet, they took them under their wings, made sure they had somebody to bunk with. And now you're going to see students who are high-fiving each other in the halls and feel very comfortable as they're coming into their freshman year. With all that being said, I'd like to invite you to Northern's football games and witness the talent of these one hundred ninety-four students coming together to perform as a single unit. Their first performance is next Thursday at 7:00 PM. And then on September fourteenth, we actually have an exciting thing where the eighth graders come in and they get to perform alongside the band in the preview show. So please come and join us sometime. Thank you. Thank you.
Christopher Titus?
Hi, good evening, board. My name is Christopher Titus and my comments tonight are about a person that's going to be leaving this board table, who has had a dramatic effect not only on my family, but that your family has had on ours. Mrs. Les, I am so proud to have served my time on the board, working with you and learning from you. And also, I have also appreciated the trust that you, your husband, had in our district of bringing your children here and educating them here in our district, in your position of being on one other side of the thing. But your dedication and your work, like I said, affected my family. And as yesterday, we found out that that someone in your family was affected by someone in my family. And that was a great surprise. And actually, it's my wife. She says if she gets laid off by Dr. Bernia tonight, that she's, she'll be okay. But again, thank you so much for all of your work and your effort here for behalf of all of our families in the district. And again, I would, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for, for all of your hard work. And secondly, as, as we have now witnessed the graduation of our students here in early June and then the completion, Dr. Bernia, with your help of your cabinet and Mr. Russo, of putting together all of the teacher contracts and getting a two-year teacher contract completed and three-year contracts for the rest of our, of your work groups here. And also as being one that was on the board that hired you, I would implore this board to start discussions of considering to extend Dr. Bernia's contract because now that he has those things under, under his wing, he can now start doing all of these other things to, to make this district improve, move on. And having that leadership, being committed forward from this board, committed is going to be important and it will allow him to do his work. So, that, that is my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Christine Titus?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I always look at the school year as being a new year rather than January 1st. So, I used to start some of my classes with a big Happy New Year banner outside of my room. First, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Bernia, the cabinet members and members of the board who welcomed us educators back to school yesterday. It was personally heartwarming seeing two of my former students sharing their experiences of attending school here in Wall Lake. So, that, that student panel, I thought, was just brilliant, hearing their success stories. And it was a great way to start off this 23-24 school year. I also, Mrs. Casa Grande touched on something in her comments that spoke to me when she shared about her four boys. And I found a lot of similarity between her experience with four kids in this district and my husband's and my experience with our four children. What I discovered and already knew was that having four children raised in the same household, schooled in the same district, doesn't mean their outcomes are the same. My kids are different, just as the students that come to us are vastly different in so many wonderful ways. I accept all kids because of their differences and that what's, that's what makes us a strong and, yes, diverse community. So, the theme, I think, of what makes us different really makes us stronger. So, I liked Dr. Bernia's comments and I've heard them before, that we are a school district versus a district of schools and that's how I choose to view my participation in this great district. So, thank you so much.
Becky Spagnola?
Good evening. My name is Becky Spagnola. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I wanted to echo everyone on both sides here that I appreciate your willingness to let everyone observe your workshop. It gives me even a small ray of hope that our board is moving forward in the right direction. I also echo for the call of healing in our community. But I also want to echo what was said in the meeting, that healing needs to begin with an apology. And on those notes, I wanted to share a bit of insight of how I handle apologies in my family. I teach my children that an apology comes in three parts. The first thing you need to have is the acknowledgement of the wrongdoing, a true admission of the act without caveats or excuses. The second part of that apology is acknowledging the impact and the effects that that action had on those who has it affected, be it a brother who was accidentally hit or their toy taken or a community that has been wounded and their trust has been broken. The third part of the apology that I require from everyone in my life is a plan of action of how they're going to move forward, how the wrongdoing is going to improve their behavior and show that they are willing to change. Especially without that last part, any apology is empty and it is just to simply placate those who were wronged while they wait for it to happen again and again. I expect nothing less from my children, my husband. They expect nothing less from me and I feel like this community should expect nothing less from this board. Thank you.
Tim Sawmiller?
Good evening. Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. I'm a cisgender male using pronouns he, him, and his. Some people just don't get it and that is unfortunate. I'm going to take the kinder approach because that is my nature and assume that most people don't get it from ignorance or inexperience or from listening to a few hard-hearted people with an agenda and therefore they need to be informed and enlightened. At the last school board meeting in June, a comment was made that it is being hypocritical when someone does not accept differing viewpoints. The author, James Baldwin, tells us that "we can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in the oppression and denial of a person's humanity and right to exist." I think Mr. Baldwin nailed it. "The description of gender identity as a lifestyle is misguided and damaging. It furthers the misconception that being gay or trans is a lifestyle choice rather than an innate knowledge that a person's gender identity differs from the one they were assigned at birth. Many LGBTQ people feel distressed about it and wish they could fit in as easily as other people. Would you choose to live in a way that risks making you the target of threats and abuse? Major lifestyle choices include career changes, leaving or joining a religion, becoming vegetarian, choosing whether to marry or stay single. They involve weighing pros and cons before ultimately making the best decisions that can be made at the time. Gender identity, on the other hand, is not a choice. And language that implies that it is a choice is damaging and harmful to those who struggle with it. This board needs to do better for the sake of all students. Yes, I can accept differing viewpoints. However, I cannot accept outright hostility toward any already marginalized class of people just because of who and what they are. A person's very existence cannot be against your beliefs. That is called bigotry and rightly so. Please sit back and ponder what your so-called viewpoints are doing to other people. Words matter. Words can wound and hurt. Do not allow yourself to get caught up in the hysteria of a group of people whose eyes and ears and hearts are closed to everything except their own narrow view of the world. We are all better than that. I know we are. I close repeating one of my favorite quotes. "The route to happiness is to accept people as they are, not as we wish them to be, to see them in the clear light of day and still love them." Thank you.
Mike Wise? Mike Wise?
My name is Mike Wise, Commerce Township. I reviewed a video clip of a recent Lakes area Tea Party political event in June where a member of our school board provided the Tea Party a recap of our recent Wall Lake board meeting, introduced themselves as part of the Tea Party Dream Team, referred to many of the speakers during the public commentary portion of a recent school board meeting as the other side, asked Tea Party members to attend school board meetings and to support the three conservatives on the board and to put out a call to action for the 2024 election, indicating it is very important that two more conservative, two more conservatives win Wall Lake school board seats. One of our high school students spoke at that recent school board meeting and was included in this Tea Party video clip. Again, this board member described this student as someone from the other side, the LGBTQ side. This board member did not take an active stance to protect that student who was shown in the Tea Party video. This is acting in a manner inconsistent with the office of a school board member. This board member has a responsibility of supporting Wall Lake schools as a whole, not just particular interest groups like the Tea Party they are a part of. By attending this Tea Party meeting, they are clearly making a distinction between us and them. They signed an oath that they would be bipartisan and have no political affiliations. They broke that oath. According to the Michigan Association of School Boards, board members are expected to uphold ethical guidelines and to ensure that familial or business relationships or interest groups, special interest groups, affiliations don't contribute to bias in decisions. They are, they violated these ethical guidelines. Their participate, participation in this Tea Party meeting runs contrary to the Wall Lake Board of Education's governance standards. Board members are expected to demonstrate concern for all students and support the Board of Education regardless of personal position. They must be open to a discussion without prior judgment on an issue. They also violated a Wall Lake Code of Ethics and should be disciplined. The code states, "I will represent all school district constituents honestly and equally and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to any partisan principle, group, or interest. I will respectfully listen to those who communicate with the board, seeking to understand their views while recognizing my responsibility to represent the interests of the entire school community." They also shared this Tea Party meeting with Shane Trejo. Trejo praised Charlottesville anti-Semitic white supremacists in civil, as civil rights heroes and condoned their political violence. Trejo was also editor of a website which celebrated white supremacists and their political violence and hate. What is this board member thinking? What should we think about this person? This board member's behavior is unacceptable, unethical, opens the Wall Lake schools to legal liability and is potentially dangerous. I am writing to encourage the school board to move to censure this person and if possible, remove them from the Wall Lake school board. Wall Lake upholds the belief of every child, every day. This board member does not share that same value. I look forward to your response and a circulation of a public recall position, petition. Thank you to those board members who contribute to a positive atmosphere in our Wall Lake schools.
Faith Frontera? Faith Frontera? I'm sorry, I said Faith Frontera if you didn't hear me. Thanks.
Hello. First, I want to thank you all for all you do and that I appreciate your support for the Secure Storage Resolution. My name is Faith and while I may be one of the newer faces here, I have been able to watch the majority of recorded meetings. I think it's good that more people are showing up. It takes courage to stand up here and every student, staff, and community member should feel proud in doing so. Although I've lived in Wixom for the last 10 years, my two kids didn't be in school in Wall Lake District until 2021 after my husband and I got married and bought our home. During the last couple of years, I've had the privilege of volunteering as an assistant basketball coach for the Wall Lake Community Ed. I've been a room mom for my son's classroom and I volunteered for several events such as flower sales, book fairs, popcorn days, and more at both of my children's schools. I love seeing the diversity of our community. When I'm cheering a team on or listening to a vocal music performance, I'm not thinking about the political views of the parent next to me. When I'm picking my fifth grader up from camp and I meet eyes with another parent who's discreetly wiping away a tear, I'm enjoying a human connection with one goal in mind, the happiness and well-being of our children. Together, we all make up the Wall Lake community. That being said, I think it is important that board members fulfill their duties in a nonpartisan way. There is no other side, especially when our motto is every child, every day. All of our children deserve a high-quality education and a safe learning environment that is free from discrimination. The divisive rhetoric that has been reoccurring at these meetings is a waste of time and energy that could be better spent on real issues, like the bullying that goes on in our schools. One of my children will not be attending Wall Lake schools this year due to that bullying, specifically to children who may be seen as different because of a disability, skin color, religion, or being part of the LGBTQ community. One child leaving the district may not seem like a big deal, but it is when you're the parent of that child and watch them go from excited to get up and go to school every morning to having panic attacks going into the building. There is a post in the Wall Lake Parents Facebook group discussing children being bullied in middle school, which has over 100 comments and reactions. We can all agree, no child deserves to be bullied ever for any reason. Maybe we can better invest our time and energy into combating that along with other important issues. At the very least, we can set an example to our children that we can be kind and compassionate to one another in spite of our uniquenesses. I appreciate all that the board does and hope that you will continue to support our community in its entirety while holding one another accountable if failing to do so. Thank you.
Is it Evelyn B. Evelyn?
Hello, my name is Evelyn. I go to Walnut Creek Middle School and I'm in eighth grade. I am part of the LGBTQ plus community and I've had many different experiences with the school. I've experienced a bus driver threaten to report me to the authorities for being gay and I have also experienced a teacher standing up to me, sending up for me to that bus driver. I'm very thankful for the staff at Walnut Creek for the support, but I'm also upset that people are bringing politics into schools. It is not necessary. I and many of my friends have been bullied to some extent over being LGBTQ. People I know have been told to hurt themselves for loving who they love, which I find extremely disturbing and offensive. My main point is why do we bring politics into schools? We are kids after all. This is a school board. You should care more about your children's education than whether a girl and a girl or a guy and a guy like each other or a girl feels more like a boy or a reverse. At such a young age, we shouldn't worry about people's different beliefs and opinions and should more focus on making friends and getting a good education. There has been conversation about banning books and I'm not sure it's necessary to ban them. I understand if you don't want your child reading something, but I think that that should not dictate the rest of the district. I understand some topics can be triggering, but instead of sheltering your child, you could talk to them about it. If it is a major issue, you could ask your teacher to give a different book to your child. We can find a compromise and a common ground if we all have an open mindset. You and me don't have to have the same opinions. We don't have to agree on everything, but can we please take politics out of the school boards? Why can't we just coexist? Why do we have to be against each other when we all have the same goal, to raise and improve future generations? We should embrace our differences or at least not hurt each other because of them. There is no need to tell each other that we shouldn't feel a certain way and there's no need to even bring it up in an educational setting. Can we please just coexist together, not only for you, but also your kids? Thank you for listening. I hope you all have a good night.
Amy Owens?
Hi, my name is Amy Owens. First, I just want to say thank you for teaching my child how to get up at this podium at barely 13 years old and speak her truth. I appreciate it. So, that's my girl. She's entering eighth grade at Walnut Creek. My two nephews graduated from Wall Lake Northern within the past five years. I am nervous, scared, actually, to speak out tonight. I'm positive some of you on the board understand that. I attempted to speak up during the pandemic about better online curriculum and I got heckled by the crowd and I've been afraid to come back here ever since. That experience stayed with me today and it's been with me ever since. I was especially concerned for my daughter to speak tonight. The reality of the world we live in is that I don't think it's safe to call attention to ourselves. to ourselves. Bullying is real, hate crimes happen, suicide is devastating. I speak from experience. And when I see board members participating in political campaign parties where videos of minor LGBTQ members are being shared as the other side and being used to rally those people who are against us, that heightens my fear for my child's safety in this community. But then I think about civil rights movements and women's equality movements and remind myself that great change happens only when the oppressed are brave enough to speak out for themselves. Bullies are silenced only when their victims stand up for themselves. I will not suppress my child's voices or the voices of so many like her. I will not teach her to hide who she is. I will not tell her that she needs to change who she is to make others more comfortable in their bigotry. We live in a country that is made beautiful by our many differences and the freedom to express them. However, with that freedom comes an even greater responsibility to learn how to live amongst those who are different than us. This truth holds weight across the entire political spectrum. We need to learn to coexist. Our children need to focus on their education and learn how to navigate a world where everyone is unique and bring something beautiful to the collective experience. I'm here to ask the Board of Education, the school staff and administration, and our community at large to focus on what's most important, guiding our younger generation to be successful and productive adults and citizens of this community. Please require your school leaders to double down on zero tolerance policies for bullying so that all children feel safe to walk the halls of our school buildings. I want to leave you with this quote from L.R. Nost, an author of Little Heart's Gentle Parenting and a well-known child advocacy researcher. It's not our job to toughen our children up to face the cruel and heartless world. It's our job to raise children who will make the world a little less cruel and heartless. Thanks for listening to us tonight.
Sandra Douse.
Hi, thank you, Board. I enjoyed your meeting before this meeting. This doesn't feel like a safe space to me. And I'm a community member, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm very disappointed that right up on your board pops up, "There will be no personal attacks on individuals. They will not be tolerated." And this board, every one of you who didn't jump up when I felt like leaping up and saying, "Personal attack, that's a personal attack." I don't care if it's on this side or this side. I'm against all personal attacks. And it's really disheartening to watch this board up here just being trained or counseled on how to hold meetings and when we have some diversity here, quite a bit of it, you're not willing to stand up and say, "We will not let you single out any board member or any person in the audience." And so I'm disappointed. I moved to Wald Lake in 1988. My life is likely more diverse than anyone in this room. I was born, or I was graduated from high school before a lot of you were born and I paid taxes for decades to support this district. I would like to see everyone's sex lives kept out of education. I was a teenager in the 60s when sex education was brought in to solve all the problems. Let's just give everybody equipment to make sure that they can go about in activities and promoted and paid for by the taxpayer. I'm not against people, but I am disappointed that our state legislature did not agree to give the same rights to religious expression and identification as they chose to give to the LGBT community. I believe that civil rights should be equal rights and that if one person is allowed to make their viewpoints, then other people should be also. And I'm just disappointed that we can't focus. Can we all agree that we need children who know how to do math if their computer goes down? Do we need so much money being spent on computer stuff? Good grief.
25 seconds.
The children I know play with computers plenty and they know how to work them. They need a good book that is not full of pictures that I, as a 70-year-old married woman for 48 years, was embarrassed to look at. And just keep it math, reading, science, real science.
Hillary Glazer. Sorry, Hillary Glazer. That's okay, I understand. I wasn't real loud.
So for those of you that don't know me, my name is Hillary Glazer. I am the Wald Lake PTSA Council President for the upcoming school year. I might become a regular person around here. I'm hoping I do because I want to be able to provide you guys with updates on what our school PTAs and PTSA's are doing. If you, I know there were a couple of you at the Presidents and Principals Breakfast, you already know that one of my goals is to create a diverse and cohesive community, a community that actually supports all students. And we can accomplish this goal by increasing our visibility of all of the PTAs within the school and our district. And our PTAs are actually doing a great job of that already. They're leaning into their school communities and they've been doing so over the last two weeks. New beginnings are hard. I'm an incoming sixth-grade parent. And PTA members have showed up to high school registrations. They did that last week. They showed up to middle school registrations and elementary meet-and-greets this week. And they're really doing an incredible job of answering so many questions from any new parent providing guidance to current parents on, you know, what to do with the whole free lunch thing. Or, hey, where do we go if I need to get a bus tag? Whatever it is, PTAs are there to help. And I got to watch this firsthand as a PTSA president at Geisler, as I'm sitting at my table and I'm watching incoming sixth-grade parents come up to the table with deer-in-headlight looks just like their kids and having board members tell them like, "Hey, it's okay. So you're going to go do this. Your Chromebooks are going to be over there. Yes, your kids are going to use Chromebooks. They're also going to use pen and paper. They're going to read books. It's going to be okay. Take a deep breath. Everything will be okay." Christie, you're right, sixth grade, they're going to be okay. I have to keep that in the back of my head. But they were doing this over the last two weeks, whether it was incoming kindergarten parents, incoming sixth-grade parents, ninth-grade parents, or just people who are new to the district, and I'm really proud of that. I had the great pleasure of attending Geisler Get Going on Monday. I also had the great pleasure of feeding the Geisler staff this morning at 6:15. So if I'm a little tired and shaky, it's been a long day. But then on the flip side, I also got to go to the Wildcat Welcome, the Popsicles with the Principal for Mary Helen Guest, and answer those questions for incoming kindergarten parents, incoming special service parents who have transferred into Guest, and it was incredible. I love being in this position and I hope that over the course of the year, I get to continue to give you these updates as something positive to look forward to. But right now, your PTAs, and I'm almost done, your PTA presidents are busy putting together baskets for the Lakes Area Youth Association Taste of the Lakes. We're here to help all of our students in the community, but also if you have any ideas for creative baskets, I've run out of them. So I'm just going to lead with that. I do want to thank you for your time tonight and I hope to see all of you at PTA meetings throughout the year.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to open tonight with Dr. Lons.
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
Mr. Durkin?
Nothing this evening, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Kohansky?
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. I just want to highlight, I know a few people mentioned middle school registration and high school registration. I understand it was a busy time and I just want to thank our staff, especially our IT staff, that was really out there helping to support all of our parents, some of those new parents that Hillary Glazer just mentioned, and helped guiding them. Our IT staff is small but mighty and they really have worked hard over the last few weeks in making sure that parents and students are ready to start school on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ms. Muir.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Just want to mention that for our PAC Parent Resource Fair that we're having this year, our inaugural Back to School Resource Fair will be occurring on August 30th from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. at the Richardson Senior Community Center. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone out.
Thank you. Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. I won't, I look forward to giving a bond update and construction update in two weeks, but just to assure everybody, including Mrs. Russ, we do have all of our inspections and approvals ready for all of the schools and we are ready to open on Monday.
Mr. Russo.
Nothing for me this evening, Dr. Bernia.
Mrs. Les.
Nothing for me either. Thank you, Dr. Bernia.
All right, just a few from me. Mr. Chatfield hit on it just a second ago. We are so excited to welcome our students back. We welcomed our staff back yesterday in such a positive atmosphere and the energy was so, so good and so positive. So I know everyone on my team, we're excited to be out and see the students return to school next week. We're really, really, really looking forward to seeing you. I want to compliment the board for their work session earlier this evening and their commitment to working together. I thought that that was time very, very well spent and something like that, I think, takes courage. And your courage to be open, to be a little bit vulnerable and to speak openly in that forum was positive and I think will serve our community very, very well. I want to welcome Julianne Muir to the board table for the first time. She's our new Assistant Superintendent of Special Services and has just, yes. And has really gotten off to a great start, the way that she approaches and has talked about engagement and support and empowerment for not just our staff, not just our students, but their parents as well. I'm so excited about that. And tonight, we wish a farewell to Mrs. Les. This is her final board meeting. I shared this yesterday and I want to share it again on the public record. In the 11-12 school year, the state of Michigan took just over $200 away from school districts in the middle of the year and then they eliminated something called 20J funds. And there was only a small number of districts that were receiving 20J funds, but Wald Lake was one of them and it was more than $300 per student. So in the middle of the school year, Wald Lake woke up one day with a more than $500 cut, over 15,000 students. And that's traumatic. And it created a massive deficit. Mrs. Les and her team and her leadership was vital to steering this district through that period of time. The state then came up with something that they called the 2X formula, where some districts received X and some districts received 2X. If you were one of those districts that received the 20J funds, even though they had been taken away from you and never restored, you were an X district. So while Wald Lake would receive $135 per pupil, neighboring districts, which were in the 2X formula, would receive $270. And so the build back from that deficit took a lot of time and Mrs. Les's leadership was so instrumental to making that happen. At our meeting on August 3rd, we met and the board approved agreements to give long overdue raises to employees on top of the raises that were given to our teachers at a June meeting. And we are financially stable and we're able to do that for our employees and make the largest investment in our employees in more than a decade because of Mrs. Les's leadership. So on behalf of me, on behalf of the entire team, on behalf of the board, on behalf of the community, thank you very much, Mrs. Les, for your work, for your contributions, and we will miss you terribly.
Dr. Bernia, I just want to say that I love this district. I truly do and it's been an honor to serve this district, this community, the students. I have worked side by side with the most amazing, dedicated people who truly care about kids and I'm going to miss you dearly.
Thank you. We're going to now move on to board commentary. Mrs. Kaplan.
Good evening. I just want to plug Lakes Area Youth Assistance and Taste of the Lakes, which is coming up September 19th at Edgewood. It's from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Tickets right now are $25 and $30 at the door. We would appreciate, if anybody wants a ticket, you can see me, you can call the Lakes Area Youth Assistance Office and we'll get you tickets. I know Mrs. Glazer talked about the baskets that we auction off. They are a huge success and a huge hit and every penny that comes into Lakes Area Youth Assistance is going directly back into the kids that need assistance in our district. And so the more people that participate, the bigger budget we can have. So I encourage everyone to come to the Taste of the Lakes. And just on a side note, what it is, is we have 19 area restaurants that come and they have little tastes of their food, you know, one of their favorite food dishes that they want to share. And when you buy your ticket, you can come in and you can taste all the things that are there. You can bid on the baskets. There's different auction items, different baskets, and different things like that. And it's just, it's a very fun night. So I encourage you all to come and do that. I do personally want to say thank you to Mrs. Les for all that she's done for this district. It's been a very tireless job and she's been phenomenal at it. So thank you for all that you've done for us. I also want to say welcome to Ms. Muir. Glad to see you at the table. We appreciate that. And looking forward to working futurely with you. I would also just want to say, looking forward to a very beginning, good beginning to the school district and I appreciate the work that us as a board did this evening. So let's keep that up.
Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mrs. Casagrande. Echoing the welcome to Ms. Muir, goodbye to Mrs. Les. I will miss your lessons. I too enjoyed our workshop and I think that we've got a lot of good goals, plans going forward to really become a more cohesive unit and to be the example that our community needs us to be. My kids are going into eighth grade and I heard something from a parent today who also has a child going into eighth grade who was giving some advice to parents going into sixth grade and I think it was great advice. It said, "Be a lighthouse for your children, not a helicopter." And I thought that that was a nice way to think about the role of a parent, not just in middle school, but throughout a child's life. But to expand on that, I think all of us need to be a light for our community. Everybody here who's passionate about anything, you get up there, you speak, we are here, we speak, take that energy and do something positive with it. I think that we can accomplish so much by taking our energy and doing good with it. I think at the end of the day, we are all so much more alike than we realize. We have so much more in common than we realize that to focus only on the differences detracts from the things that make us similar. And really, it hurts our community and I'm focused on and committed to being more of a light in the community and I hope that more people will join me in doing that going forward this school year.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Casagrande. Yes, I have a couple of comments. Hopefully I don't get too long-winded. I didn't get a chance to speak much since the early part of June. So first one I really would like to go back to is the June budget. Sometimes we have a challenge in trying to understand why some board members will speak out and ask certain pertaining questions to budgets and how they operate and the function of them and maybe what they do show and what they don't show. So the first thing I want to say from that meeting is that for the Wald Lake School teachers that were here that may have been concerned about not being paid in July and that the budget wouldn't be passed, that just wasn't going to happen. So just to reassure you all that, that was never going to be on the table, but we didn't have a chance to really speak that. The same thing on the budget, there's a lot of times when I personally will take a look at the budget and say, "Hey, there's some things that you really are looking for, but you don't actually see them." So one of them is new ideas or new curriculum money or things of that nature. So I think that's an important aspect. So when people call out, you know, "Are we being too tough on the administration or not?" We're doing that because we're looking for that future and is that future present? So at the same time, I think there were some comments about the Oakland Schools budget that was not passed by this board in May. some comments about the Oakland Schools budget that was not passed by this board in May. And there was more to that. The Oakland Schools budget had a lot of, uh, things that were a little bit peculiar for this particular fiscal year. One of it was they showed some reasonable revenue increases in that budget. But they had a lot of, uh, areas that were, uh, being, uh, cut back in. So, their vocational programs were showing fairly large cuts and so were their special needs program, which is basically what they administer on behalf of the county. So, there's a concern there. And then for somebody like myself, I always want to look and see if there's some new money in there for some new programs. I think we all are always interested in that. So, I think when you hear those comments, so we had some board members that obviously voted against it. I had to leave that meeting, uh, on some personal reasons. So, I would have voted for that, against that budget also. Um, not because I, I, I'm out to get Oakland Schools. I'm out to see that there should be those opportunities and not have to ask the questions, "Why are they cutting in some of these, these really vital areas?" So, that's something we need to ask. We had a great work session and I, I just want to ask everyone sitting here that were able to view that work session, that we talked at some great length about nonpartisan and what it takes to be a school board member in the state of Michigan. And for some of you, me, that were able to watch that, um, you have to realize that, you know, the state of Michigan has requirements that we all run, uh, as a nonpartisan candidate and we operate as a nonpartisan candidate. So, I really would hope that we can get your support too. Not only you there here today, present, but you that are Zooming on a day-to-day basis to help us. It's not an easy task, by no means. It's a tough task to stay in that kind of neutrality, um, that it takes to be a good, effective local board member. So, I'll ask for that support from you guys all the time. The other issue for me, it's probably not the, the, the one that people want to hear a lot about, but I spent a lot of time when I came on this board about Zooming and about having these meetings broadcasted publicly. And I, I think it's important that, that, that it wasn't just myself, but there were other board members for years in, in the preceding periods that also advocated strongly for those. But I think once we were able to achieve that, and I thank Dr. Bernia for his support in getting us there, um, in January. But I think people have to realize that that's the school board and the school districts media. So, we do that and provide that so that you have that opportunity to see this proceeding, whether you see it here live and in, in, in real time, or you view it some other time of the month, months going forward. But that's really there for your viewing. And I think that a lot of times, I, I saw a lot of comments come in that, you know, it's, you know, it's on the internet and it's, you know, it's public and all this. It's not really that public. There's a lot of things you can't do on the internet anymore. You can't download music for free. You can't take videos for free anymore. So, you have to keep in mind when you guys view these things that this is, this is just a public viewing for you to, to use in that form, not to take it and use it in some other form. So, I would just, you know, s- s- give you the comment that there's, for some of us that worked really hard to get to this point, it's very disheartening when we get into a position where we're now having to go back and forth, "Well, why would it be used this way and why would it not?" So, please refrain when you possibly can. It's for your personal viewing. Um, the last, uh, comment I have is, I was very happy to be able to visit and, uh, watch the Wald Lake Western Boys Varsity Soccer Game last Friday night with a brand-new coach. Um, unfortunately, they drew at 3-3 with UAD Jesuit. Um, but a very spirited game. And for those of you that, that probably all know I'm a pretty good soccer guy. So, tomorrow night, I think we have Wald Lake Central and Wald Lake Western at Central. So, at 7:00 PM, uh, Boys Varsity, I think it would be a very spirited game too, if you have time to come out and watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tice?
So, it's hard to believe summer has come to... Sorry. Um, yeah. So, it's hard to believe summer is over already. Summer, um, goes by so fast. And I know there's been a lot of people throughout the district working really hard this summer. Um, lots of students and, um, teachers doing summer school. And, um, so just thank you to all of them who worked so hard this summer and all the staff just trying to prepare for a new school year. I was in today trying to get some stuff fixed with my, um, email issues. Um, so, there's been a lot of people working really hard. Um, so, thanks to all of, all of them. Um, Mrs. Les, you're going to be, um, greatly missed. And so, just thank you for all your years of service here. Um, and just thank you for, just, I know I've spent some time in your office as well. And just thank you for all your help, um, just trying to navigate all this stuff. Um, as a new board member, appreciate that. Um, welcome to Mrs. Muir. Um, and then, um, I just really appreciated the workshop that we were able to have tonight. I think it was very beneficial to just be able to sit down and just have some, um, just really good discussions and just hear, um, just, uh, um, just hear kind of people's heart behind the things. Um, and so, some of you may have, um, already been here for that. Some of you may have not. So, um, just to kind of, maybe if you weren't here, just to repeat a little bit, um, from earlier. Um, I, um, I know a lot of people think, um, you know, we talked about, um, having that political separation, being nonpartisan. Um, and when, um, when I sit up here, um, I am not sitting up here trying to be, um, political in any way. Um, but, um, I was just telling my fellow board members that, um, I'm not making decisions based on my politics, but I am making my decisions based on my faith because my faith informs everything that I do. Um, and I can't separate my faith from who I am, um, because, because that's who I am. Um, and for me to do so would be to, um, to violate my own conscience. And so, um, I, I'm a teacher and I spend my day working with six and seven-year-olds. And that's where I am most comfortable. I, um, enjoy teaching my classroom full of kids and I'm excited to, um, get back into my classroom, um, on September 5th. And, um, I can be with them all day long and it's great. And, um, coming in and talking to a group of adults, um, talking in front of people, um, is not necessarily where, um, is, is just not where I feel most comfortable. And so, um, yes, I did get asked to speak at a tea party, um, about a, a month or so ago. And, um, so I had a whole speech prepared. Um, and as I got up there, I got nervous, as I often do, speaking in public. And so, um, as I deviated a little bit from my speech, I may, I said things that in hindsight, I realized, um, were, was probably not the best choice of words. And as a result, um, you know, was, um, offensive to some of my fellow colleagues. And that was never my intention. It was never my heart to be that way. Um, and also, I think, um, as we were discussing earlier in our workshop, um, um, just even, um, you know, I had made a comment about the other side and I was not referencing any of my board mem, fellow board members at this table. Um, but I will say, as community members get, come up to this podium and, um, directly call out, um, some of the new board members, it, it does feel like an us versus them. Um, and, um, not, not by my colleagues here, um, but as people get up and make public comment and, and call specific members on the board out, um, it, it has felt that way, that the community is against, um, the, us new members coming in. Um, so, um, you know, I, I do apologize for, um, you know, being offensive in that way. Um, you know, but I think it's also important, um, for you to hear my heart behind that as well. And to know, um, you know, I'm, huh, I'm clearly, um, not perfect. And, um, you know, I was actually, I was just praying the other night that I would be able to be humble and teachable. Um, because I believe that those are important characteristics to have. And I want, I want to be that. Um, I don't claim to know everything. And so, when I, when I am wrong, I do hope that I can be humble enough to acknowledge that. And, um, you know, to take that responsibility because I think it's important. And it's something that I teach my students to do. And I should not be teaching them to do something that I'm not willing to do myself. Um, and so, I know, um, also, it was, um, you know, brought up that some of you don't feel safe coming to the podium. Um, but I will say that as a board member, um, you know, watching some of you come up and make some of these comments, um, sometimes we, or I guess I shouldn't speak for the whole board, but I, um, sometimes look and feel like, "Okay, I'm going to make sure I walk out with somebody tonight" because that, you know, you could see the anger on somebody's face. Um, and so, that, that goes both ways. Sometimes we, we, I don't feel safe either. And, um, I know Dr. Bernia has been great to, you know, I know if, if he knew I didn't feel safe, I know he would be more than willing to say, "Hey, I, I will go out with you. I will, whatever." Um, you know, so I appreciate, um, his willingness to do that. Um, but, um, but I think that's something that, that you as the audience also need to know. And, um, you know, and then it was brought up in our workshop, "Hey, you know, those comments weren't even so much my problem as this video that was shown." Um, and just so you know, I had nothing to do with the video that was shown. Um, I did not, do not condone that in any way. Um, I had no part in the video that was shown. So, um, you know, I do apologize for, um, you know, that, um, student not feeling safe. Um, and I would not show videos of our minor children.
Thank you. Mr. Seckler?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, what I love about this time of year is walking into a school building. Uh, PTSA breakfast with the presidents. Getting together with staff for, uh, the teacher and staff orientation. I walked into Northern Wednesday morning. Was it Wednesday morning?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Oh, time flies when you're having fun. I walked into Northern yesterday about 7:30. The school was empty except for the staff that was getting prepped. And I just looked at this beautiful building and I, and everybody coming in was smiling and laughing and having a good time. And my favorite line to a lot of the staff and specifically to some of the newer staff is, "Please bottle it because you'll need it come March or April of next year." But, you know, it, it is a great feeling. It is a great time to start again, uh, to see the improvements to our buildings, to see the, uh, growth at Western. That is long overdue, Mr. Chaffield. Uh, and, and to visualize all of this. It really gives me a lot of hope. Um, the student panel yesterday, I think that is something we should continue to do on a yearly basis because it really highlights the end product that is coming out of this district, what they are capable of doing, their thoughts, their ideals, their visions, and their hopes for tomorrow. So, it gives me a lot of, uh, pleasure in that. Uh, Mrs. Muir, welcome. I am thrilled to see you at the table. Mrs. Les, to somebody who helped me understand school finance that I had no knowledge of, uh, when I started, that explained the numbers, that when I was panicked about 20J and the cuts that year, looked at me and said, "It's going to be rough." Tornado warnings.
What do we do in a tornado warning, Dr. Lance?
Where do we... Inside five...
We have to take a recess because we have to go to a secure area. So, we're not sure where that is, but we're going to find out from Dr. Lance.
Right, in the hallway.
So, is everybody, everybody?
Everybody, yeah.
Okay.
Are we, uh, back in session, Mrs. Casagrande?
We are back in session. Go ahead, Mr. Seckler.
Okay. So, anyways, Mrs. Les, you're going out with a bang too. So, uh, just, uh, thank you. I know where to find you in Oakland Schools. And last but not least, Mr. Russo, I wanted to call you yesterday for the four-digit lottery number, but I failed. So, that's it.
All set? Mrs. Vanis?
Thank you. Hey, welcome back, everybody. Welcome back to the meeting after a tornado alarm and also to the new school year. I'm sure, um, it brings a lot of excitement and a lot of trepidation, probably not only for the students, but for parents and for teachers. So, um, here's to an amazing new school year. Thank you, Mrs. Les. Um, welcome, Ms. Muir. And, uh, I hope that folks got a chance to watch the workshop, um, and that we had recently. And I hope that there will be many others. And I, um, I am personally excited and energized to be able to have discussions and conversations, um, about topics that will move us forward in this district. Um, I think that's what we're hungry for as a board. I think that's what the community is hungry for. And if you didn't see it, I think we took a very, um, a very sound first step, um, to that tonight that I believe all of us were pretty, um, happy with. So, um, just a challenge to the community, um, as you start to see us shift and focus on things that we want to be focused on to make our district better, please shift with us.
Yeah.
And bring comments and bring, um, your opinions and bring things that are important to those topics as well as whatever else you're feeling. But, um, but I think that, um, together we can set a new tone and, um, have an amazing school year. Thank you.
Yes, I just have a few things. Um, I want to thank, uh, Hillary Glazer for coming and talking about our PTAs and PTSAs. Um, and one of the things I always do is I join a PTA or PTSA, um, every year. And I no longer have a s- And I no longer have, uh, students in the district because they've graduated. But you can still join and it is an advocacy group. And I would encourage everybody to hop online and, you know, find a PTA or PTSA to join and, um, you know, get involved in, you know, contacting our legislators or getting those calls to action and, and letting them know what we think as a community, as parents, as taxpayers, et cetera. So, um, I'm not sure that she's, she's still here, but thank you for the reminder. I wrote myself an action item to remember to do that. And also, I want to thank the IT staff. A couple of us, a few of us were a little disconnected, uh, this last week when we realized, when we switched over, that we were a little disconnected to our email for a couple of days. And I was, uh, very promptly by Dr. Bernia and Ms. Silvel and, uh, Mr. Brian Weber. I was put back in, in, uh, connection with everything. So that was very nice. We know things happen, but it's nice to know we have that support. And, and Mr. Seigler talked about a couple of things, but we're so, um, glad to see the groups coming back into the buildings and, and, and the important, um, groups that, that, that help us start that mission in, in helping to educate our students. And that's what I told my husband, there's, you know, four things that I get to do this week on behalf of the board, or this month. And, and so I had to welcome 57 new teachers to the district. That was wonderful to see all of that. And we realized we were a little old. I think our HR manager said he actually taught one of the, the new teachers.
Oh, no.
That was interesting. And I remember when we used to sign certificates, but this time we were, they were doing selfies. So that was different. That was new. But it was just really nice to, to welcome 57 new teachers to the district. And so, thank you, Mr. Russo, for all your hard work and your staff's work in doing that. And then the welcome back you already mentioned, so I won't dwell on that. The other thing that, uh, that we did is we welcomed back the administrators and the, and the staff. And that was wonderful to, to see. We've shifted, uh, personnel across the district and some are still in their same positions. But to see the energy and, you know, the choices and the work that all of our administrators will do to lead in this district was just fabulous. The energy in that room was just amazing. And I was only there at the very beginning of it. So that was, that was great. And yes, the, the PTSA council and principal's breakfast is always a, a, a great, um, you know, seeing all the leaders and the people who put in all that time and volunteering and effort was just fabulous. So, all those things happened in August before the students walk in the door. And we're just really, um, happy as a board to be able to be there and to welcome them back. All right. Um, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes from our June 1st, 2023 special meetings. We had a closed session and also a regular meeting. And then we also had a proposed June 8th special meeting closed session for our superintendent evaluation. And then on the June 15th, we had a special meeting, August 3rd, a special meeting closed session, and then also a special meeting that was an, uh, an open meeting. We also have a personnel recommendations, new hires and resignations. We have purchases under $50,000 for ClassLink Staff and Student Single-User Online Access System, a one-year annual software license renewal for $46,608.02. That's coming from the general fund. We also have a Huddle, Wald Lake Central, Western and Northern High Schools Athletic Livestream Video System, one-year annual subscription renewal for $30,058.19, also coming from the general fund.
Mrs. Kastgrind.
Mrs. Lovin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We now have purchases. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go down to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Uh, our first item is Skyward, which is our K-12 Student Management System. It is our annual one-year software license renewal in the amount of $146,251.62, which will come out of the general fund.
Mrs. Kastgrind.
Mrs. Lovin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of Skyward K-12 Student Management System, one-year annual software license renewal for $146,000, 200, or $146,251.62 from the general fund.
Support.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Back to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Our next item for purchases is the Google for Education, which we call the G-Suite for Education. It is our one-year annual software license renewal of $51,709.75, which will also come out of the general fund.
Mrs. Kastgrind.
Mr. Seigler.
I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of Google for Education, one-year annual software license renewal for $51,709.75 from the general fund.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Right back to Mrs. Kohansky one more time.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Last on my list of purchases is our iReady K8 Student Diagnostic Assessment of Reading and Math. It's a one-year annual software renewal. It's also including professional development and other related services in the amount of $444,557, uh, which will be paid for through a combination and variety of state grants, which filter through the general fund. So it's grant-funded, but we have to say that that comes through the general fund. So.
Mrs. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of iReady K8 Student Diagnostic Assessments of Reading and Math, one-year annual sophomore re, software renewal, professional development services for $444,557 from the state grants distributed through the general fund.
All right. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Petersen.
This is a large amount. This is not one that I've seen before. Can you give us a little bit of background on what and how long we've had this within the district? And, uh, and, uh, just the wherewithal. I, again, it was new to me this week, so. And it's a large number, so.
Absolutely. I know that, um, I fielded, uh, a couple of community questions too as well regarding iReady, as well as some board member questions about that. We've used iReady in the district for about 12 years. Uh, we went to a diagnostic, uh, adaptable computer, adaptable diagnostic system for our teachers to use because it's definitely time-efficient and quicker, uh, provides standards, um, and a really great picture of how our students are doing in terms of mastering those standards year by year. It also is, uh, a, a type of a software assessment system in which our teachers can really quickly group students together. I don't know if you'll remember when I shared data at the end of June. We talked about how teachers can use this platform to actually create student, uh, groupings, whether that be for students that need additional support or students that are at the high end that might need more enrichment and more challenge. And, and so, we've been using this system for about 12 years. We used it prior to COVID in terms of, uh, helping our teachers to be more responsive, uh, in terms of their instruction. Uh, it can be used formatively, which means that teachers can use it for planning for instruction. It can also be used summatively, meaning we can look back and see how have our students done in learning what we wanted them to learn. One of the things that happened during COVID is, is that districts, um, I think one of the things that COVID maybe uncovered for a lot of places is that districts were not regularly assessing students against the standards to this degree, right? We've always given tests. We've always given unit tests and quizzes and things like that. But this particular system allows us to really track progress and progress over time. And it also really allows us to tailor instruction for kids based on what they know and where they need to go next. So, uh, because of that, the state of Michigan required, um, through, and I don't have it in front of me, I think it's Public Act 148, but don't quote me on that number. I'll check it. That, uh, all districts are required to provide a benchmark assessment to all students kindergarten through eighth grade. And that was passed in August of 2021. Uh, iReady was one of the approved assessment vendors. They're through Curriculum Associates, but that was approved by the Michigan Department of Education as an allowable benchmark assessment to address that legislation, that piece of legislation that says you can't just kind of hope that kids are learning. You need to be tracking that and you need to be sharing that data with, with your parents on a regular basis. So, the great news for us is that we didn't need to really change anything that we were doing to comply with that. So it is part of legislation now that we have to be providing this benchmark assessment. And, you know, I know it seems like a really large amount, and I know it is a really large amount, but we have over 12,000 students. And so, when you think about the number of software licenses that go along with that, the professional development services that they provide back to us, they actually come in-house, quarterly, I would, I'll look at, I, I'll look at my schedule. I'm happy to share that with you. But they come in-house in district and run professional development, not only for our principals, but for our teachers in the use of the platform and in looking at the data and making instructional decisions. So it really is very robust. The state does offset, uh, quite a bit of this amount for, uh, those that are choosing iReady as their, as one of their approved vendors. And we are also able to use, uh, a couple of other, uh, grant sources from the state to pay for this. So, um, that's the information I have. If you need any other, you know, specific data, I'm more than happy to pull that for you.
Just one follow-up question. So, that means everyone in the district, all the teachers are using that software?
All the ki, all the teachers kindergarten through eighth grade use it. Yes, everybody. And we use it three times a year. Correct.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And now we are moving on to bid awards. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go over to Mr. Chatfield.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Uh, each year, we replenish the engineered wood fiber under our playground structures for the safety of students. Uh, three quotes were obtained and we recommend awarding this project to Superior Ground Cover, same company that performed, provided the service for us last year based on their low price of $51,000.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid award for playground soft surface material to Superior Ground Cover Incorporated from the general fund.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, we're going to go right back to Mr. Chatfield for one more bid award.
Thank you. Uh, an important feature of the 2019 bond program includes the construction of team buildings at each high scho, uh, high school stadium field for teams to utilize before and during athletic events. These facilities will have, uh, team rooms, athlete restrooms, coaches' offices, a trainer's room, and an office for, uh, game officials. However, these, these facilities are not field houses and are not intended for athletic training or events. Uh, the total cost for the three facilities at each, uh, at the three high schools is $8,101,358, which represents bids for the 25 trade categories necessary to complete these projects. I, I will add, um, each of these facilities is about 5,000 square feet, uh, apiece, Western's being slightly larger because in order to fit it on the site, we had to, uh, demot, we will have to demolish the existing visitors concession stand and incorporate it into this new facility.
Mr. Seigler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the bid awards for the 2019 bond projects, team building bid package for Wald Lake Central, Northern and Western High Schools from the 2019 bond fund.
Any discussion?
Just one thing.
Yes, Mrs. Lovin.
I know there's some people, uh, in the community, I, I heard gasps, uh, about the cost. Uh, they're concerned about the cost. One thing I just want to remind the community is this is, um, money that was already approved as part of the bond. This is just awarding the contract for the construction. So, this isn't some new expense. This is just who's going to be getting those bids. So, of course, spending is, is important and where the money goes is important. But this is already money that was earmarked and, um, it's just who is going to be doing the construction.
Thank you. Any, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolution, board approval of Head Start program. Dr. Bernia.
We're going to go back to Mrs. Kohansky.
Thank you, Dr. Bernia. Um, I'd like to let the board know this is our annual renewal of Head Start. We do this every year, uh, as a formality. So in accordance with the federal Head Start performance standards, the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education is the governing body of our program. So to comply with all federal contract regulations, Wald Lake Schools Head Start is submitting the following items for school board approval. And those were in your board packet. You should have been able to take a look at those, read those over. So, thank you.
Mrs. Kastgrind.
Mrs. Kaplan.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2024 Wald Lake Head Start budget narrative and be granted permission to pursue the early Head Start, Head Start continuation application.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And the last two items are the Board Policy Regulations Update, 4000 AR, and Board Policy Administrative Regulations. Dr. Bernia, I'll let you go ahead and cover those together.
Yeah, so the, these two items do not require a vote from the board. These are administrative regulations which fall under my purview as superintendent. Uh, the first is 4000 AR, which is essentially the roster of our administrators. So this updates that roster as it stands at this moment. Uh, we will come back to you and update it again. As you see, we have a couple of open positions that we're working to fill at this time. So watch for that update. The second is, uh, in keeping with our discussion from the spring, uh, the administrative regulations, uh, the, the board did, uh, an update of board policy in 2020. And, and the administrative regulations which accompany that board policy were not published on the website. And so, it had been a couple of years. So my cabinet and I went back to work, updated those documents, shared them with you in June. And now we're here to just confirm that we're going to upload those to our website and they will be available for the community to review. So those are my two items, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Seigler.
Mrs. Kastgrind, just for anybody who might be interested, as the start of the school system, start of the school year, Football Friday is not Football Thursday. Western 42, Mont 27.
Go Warriors!
And we are adjourned at 10:35. Thank you.